Good evening. Tonight is the collective committee meeting of the city of Avon Lake. It is December the 2nd. We're going to start it off with a work session. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Gentry. The topic is Avon Lake Regional Water Coal Yard Purchase Report. Ms. Gentry?
Thank you. So I had invited Avon Lake Regional Water and their consultants to come to council. Per our, when we had made the original agreement, we asked that Avon Lake Regional Water come back and give us an explanation of what was found, what has been done, and why we shouldn't be concerned about the property anymore because we know they've done a lot of work over there. So I did want to have Mr. Gross come up first to kind of give us a background. So Mr. Gross, just wanted to let people know you are an Ohio Voluntary Action Program certified professional, and I'm going to ask you to explain what that is. And then also, you've been working on environmental assessments and remediation, brownfields, geology, and hydrogeology as your specialty, and so that's the background. Now, Steve works for Verdantis, and that is who the Avon Lake Regional Water hired to work in addition to what ALERG had completed their work. And so you were to take a look at what they've done and then figure out what else the city needs to do. So I just wanted to give an introduction so that people knew exactly who you are, Mr. Gross. So if you wouldn't mind coming up and explaining ALERG, what they provided to us and the additional work that you needed to do, and then we'll talk about HZW's work that they also followed up with.
Good evening. Steve Gross with Verdantis, and thank you for that introduction. Yeah, I, you know, not knowing really what the agenda was for tonight, I was planning on and talking with Mr. Monroe to kind of give a general overview of what Verdantis was hired to do for this project. And we're talking solely about the former coal yard across, on the south side of Lake Road. So when we were contracted with them, our kind of mission was to first look at the existing data for the former coal yard. There had been some assessment work done by Deegan and Associates, who was LERG's consultant, or is currently their consultant for the power plant, and at that time was the consultant for the south portion of the property. We're looking, that property is about thirty, just over thirty-five acres in size, and is a narrow elongated property. So we were first tasked to take a look at the technical documents. They had, Deegan had a Phase One, I think it was dated August 23, and a Phase Two, or two series of Phase Twos. The work was conducted between 2023 and 2024. We were provided that information under NDA to conduct a data gap evaluation to determine, you know, where, what information they've done, or what data they've collected, and compare that then to the Voluntary Action Program. And as we've spoke before, the Voluntary Action Program is a program in Ohio that's a risk-based program that allows a volunteer to go in, evaluate the property against published rules and standards, and then compare that for different property uses, whether it's residential, commercial, industrial, commercial-industrial land use, recreational. So it provides you the ability to do that, and that's when we refer to the Voluntary Action Program or VAP. That's what we're referring to. Once we completed our data gap evaluation, we then conducted a Phase One property assessment, both following the guidelines for Ohio VAP, which is 3745, 300-6. That's the code or the rule, as well as ASTM, the American Society of Testing and Materials Standards. And we did that under 1527-21 for all appropriate inquiry. It's what you do before, as part of your acquisition for a property. So when we did our Phase One, we met both of those standards. The Phase One really was used to kind of guide us through the next phase, and that's developing a scope of work for the Phase Two. That and the data gap evaluation kind of identified areas that still needed some additional assessment. When Deegan and Associates did a great job, they collected a tremendous amount of data, and I'll kind of walk a little bit through that. Their assessment was more of a Phase Two ESA, which you'll hear that term, environmental site assessment for a sale of the property. We wanted to look at it a next step further. Regional Water wanted us to take a look at it from a VAP perspective, which has a little bit different standards than that. So we identified those data gaps to meet what would be required under the Rule Seven of the Ohio Voluntary Action Program. So one of the, well, several of the things that we identified in the Phase One. One was the site, in fact, was eligible to be under the VAP. It didn't have any RECA issues or other priority lists from US EPA or under corrective action under Ohio EPA. It was eligible to be taken through the Voluntary Action Program. We also then determined as part of our Phase One, areas on the site that were of environmental concern, which would be identified as identified areas. And that's where either known or potential releases of hazardous substance or petroleum may have occurred into the environment on the property. And from there, then, we developed our scope, and we started to implement our Phase Two activities. In February, I believe it started in February of 2024. We finished that initial phase in August of '24. So I said there was a lot of data, a lot of characterization out there. When Deegan and Associates did their iterative assessments, I think in total, they completed about 109 soil samples, soil borings across the facility, or across the property, installed five groundwater monitoring wells. We reviewed that. They covered pretty much all of the areas and plus some additional areas that were outside known or identified areas. We went in and completed an additional 33 soil borings, collecting soil samples. We added two more additional groundwater monitoring wells on the property, as well as a couple of wells off property to better assess the groundwater flow. Because I mentioned that the property is elongated north to south. It's a little difficult to put a couple of wells in and try and get flow direction and that kind of thing. So we kind of widened the net, so to speak. All total, we combined that data. We did a quality evaluation on their data as well as ours. We had, I think it's about 195 or so soil samples collectively across the property, in addition to the groundwater samples, surface water samples. So we took that data, and we first compared it to the generic standards for commercial-industrial and construction excavation worker exposures. Those are the receptors. As a conservative approach then, because there was an area that was mentioned to be an all-purpose trail, I really didn't know what that was going to mean, if that was a bike trail, if that was a walking trail, really what that meant, and so we wanted to look at it a little conservative. So we broke that out and looked at that as a commercial land use with high child frequency exposure. And typically, you don't do that. You can use a bike trail. If you have a bike trail, you can use commercial standards for recreational and compare that, depending on your use. That may not be the case, you know, to the north when we're looking at that because it's a different recreational land use. So let's don't, I only say that because I don't want to confuse that issue later when we talk about that because it is, they are different uses. Not only did we look at the direct contact, we looked at the cumulative and aggregate exposures. So taking, I think I explained it in a couple of meetings ago, where we're taking multichemicals and adding them up. Let's say five chemicals, and they all meet. If you add them together, then you need to look at the risk and hazard on those chemicals, as well as the pathways. So direct contact, maybe indoor air, direct contact to water. Those pathways, we want to look at that as an aggregate as well. So we did that. What we found and concluded that the entire property meets commercial-industrial standards, as well as the multi-use trail also meets commercial use, commercial-industrial use, and the commercial high child frequency exposure. When we looked at the data as a whole, it's a pretty, and when I say clean, I use that relative because there are chemicals of concern that are detected out there, but they're all below standards that we found for the most part. There's only a couple of areas that had some exceedances, and those can be managed under the VAP specifically with different institutional controls and maybe a risk mitigation plan. Just depends, and we can talk about that more in a minute. The groundwater, we assessed the groundwater. We determined that it's a very low-yielding saturated zones out there. They consider it, they call it a Class B groundwater, which means it's really not potable use. And there's water that's available. You know, we've kicked around and we talked, I think originally, the potential need for urban setting designation, for example. Or you could classify the water to determine what the yields are. This is a low-yielding site. There's really no risk of being a potable source issue. So we evaluated groundwater to surface water and determined that the data and through numeric modeling that that was not going to be an issue, and we don't have a complete pathway. So with that, then, we conducted a property-specific risk assessment that addressed all of those kind of pathways. And we're at a point now where we've been charged with going forward to prepare an NFA letter and submit that then to Ohio EPA for a covenant not to sue. Kind of the next steps, we'll be going out there later this month, actually, just to get a few more samples in a couple of areas where we had one exceedance of the saturation of TPH in a soil sample at like six feet. That's easily managed generally under the Voluntary Action Program. You can put a risk mitigation plan in place, or you heard the word, an RMP. That then provides information to a construction excavation worker that they need to take care in that area when they do any kind of subsurface work. Well, our goal is to go out, do some additional assessment. We already know it's a very small area because we have samples around it. We're going to see how small. It could be, you know, a five-by-five-foot area out there. Make the decision what we want to do with it. That'll be something that I'll work with Regional Water on and come up with a solution. So once we have all of the Phase Two work done, then we'll go ahead and revise that Phase Two, add that data, and see if it changes anything in the property-specific risk assessment. And that's the evaluation of pathways. I don't anticipate it, but even if it does, we can change that and come up with any type of remedy that's required. So once we evaluate that information, that puts us in a position then to take two, kind of, the next two approaches would be to complete a new Phase One property assessment. I had mentioned before that the Phase Ones are really only good for 180 days. That's their shelf life, and you have to do another one before an NFA letter is written. So we'll go ahead and do a Phase One update. Concurrently then, prepare the NFA letter that is a summation of all the environmental work done to date, including any assessment work, any remediation work, any demolition work that was conducted on the property. And it summarizes the risk assessment, and it's a fairly voluminous summary. It has an executive summary that goes for filing and then a detailed report that goes through all of the aspects that need to be met through the Voluntary Action Program. Once that document's completed, then we'll make a decision, well, I won't, but Regional Water will make a decision on how to go forward with requesting a covenant not to sue from Ohio EPA. At that point, we may use technical assistance to kind of run through that the NFA letter presents some of the information. This site actually, I don't want to jinx myself, but is actually one of the simpler sites that I've worked on a long time. And just because of the nature, it's a coal yard primarily. Coal yards typically are not that impacted. It's usually surface impacts in an environment like this with a geology where we have shallow clays on top of shale. It's typically not a site that is grossly impacted. One, because there's no manufacturing, there's no other chemicals typically that are used. It's really a coal residual. That'll be different when we look next door to the north. So I don't want you to kind of draw a parallel to this property and the property to the north. They're two different properties, two different activities have, you know, been conducted on those properties. So at that point, that's kind of a general overview of what we've done, where we are today. I feel very good about this. I've done a lot of these projects, taken them through the Voluntary Action Program, and I think we're in a really good spot to receive our covenant not to sue.
Ms. Gentry?
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
So the land use for this 38 acres is commercial-industrial?
Yes.
And what about the multi-use trail?
I really could go how you want it to go. It can, I mean, as far as, I understand that's still not decided. It was designed as a multi-use trail that goes from Walker Road up to Lake Road. It's going to be a walking trail or a bike trail. That's how it was explained. We went, like I said, we went ahead one step further and kind of looked at it as a commercial property with high child frequency, which really what that means is it's more a long-term exposure. So eight hours a day or so at daycare, for example. That's typically how that receptor is evaluated, not an outdoor recreational use bike trail. But either way, we meet both of those standards.
Mr. Shamir, anything else?
Yes, actually. So when you guys did the assessment, you had a conceptual model, which I think you utilized for your risk assessment, correct?
And we developed within the, we developed a property-specific site conceptual model as well within our risk assessment. Yeah, we developed that based on the information that was provided to us.
Exactly. So when you, when you developed that, that was based on the condition where you moved on and did the actual work? So this is with ground cover and not with respect to what the site was prior to regrading and the conditions in April through May of 2023? I'm just trying to get an understanding. If you guys looked at the condition of the site during April of 2023 until actually, let's say, November of 2023?
We looked at aerial photos throughout history on that site. I was on site sometime in late '23. But some of the activities, the remedial activities had already been started, and they were close to being finished. But I'm, and forgive me because I'm not quite understanding your question on where you're going with that.
My question, do we have access to the overhead by any chance?
It's going to take a moment.
Yeah, I can give us this. Okay. The reason we asked for a risk assessment wasn't so much post Clean Water Act violation. It actually refers to the condition of the site at this point in time, through the period of November of '23, where the site was actually being cleared of debris and everything else. The coal fines were being spread on site, and if you look, there is no erosion control on site. So this, again, it's April 20th. We've shared, I've shared this photo a number of times. I actually got this photo from the city's archives from a drone footage. So this was the condition of the site at the time of Clean Water Act violation. You know, engineering controls and everything else are great mechanisms to control. But from this period until this period, we asked the question, when the city and Avon Lake Regional Water gave permission to connect the pond at that location to the sewer, stormwater sewer, what was the risk and what was the condition? Now, if you look, you have an emergency overflow, and that site, which was shut down. So the site's discharge into Lake Erie was discontinued in May of '23. And from May of '23 until November of '23, when there was a connection made into the stormwater system of the city by Avon Lake ALERG, the question was, what was the risk? Had you guys anticipated, evaluated? And if I may go back, this is during a period where over from the 3rd of April until the time that discharge was continued and the Clean Water Act violation was reported, we had 3.56 inches of rain that fell during that period. There was a massive amount of water that came through that site. No erosion control, no mechanism for that surface water runoff to be controlled. And it ended up in the pond. So the question has always been, was that looked at? And when I asked for a risk assessment, I clearly asked, was there a risk assessment done for the work before allowing the connection of that storm, of that pond at the coal yard into the city's stormwater park? So if I go backwards, here it is. You've got your 38 acres, which is clear, leveled, and you have coal fines that are sitting. It could be all fine, it could not be. I mean, it's, 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 I can't make that decision based on no data. But we know that that 38 yards, that 38 acres flew, the water flew out of there into that pond. Before, this was, this pond was hydraulically connected to the outfall at 002. When the outfall was connected, disconnected, and flow into Lake Erie was discontinued, there was no connection to Miller Road Park Discharge Area. That's the outfall for the city. So based on their own plan, or, let me go back again. Based on this, the overflow went into Powdermaker Creek. Was that assessed? Was what was being let out into the lake assessed prior to allowing it to flow into Lake Erie and in the interim point when it was flowing into Powdermaker Creek? This was the question.
The answer is, may I?
Now, please.
That's irrelevant to this project.
It's not relevant.
It's not relevant.
Exactly. So my question has not been answered, and this is, this is, this is the disconnect. The disconnect is, I've got no, I've gone through your risk assessment, and I've gone through your work. There is no issues with what you've assessed. The point is, the connection that was allowed by the city and Avon Lake Regional Water, was that done based on a risk assessment? And the answer is no. So what you've done and what you've gone through the process of, I've got no issues. And this is, this is, the problem that I've got is the city administration and council seem to want to kind of not indulge in the idea that they should have done a risk assessment. So you can't move away from the point of learning so that this doesn't happen in the future. So that is the issue. What you've done, the risk assessment, engineering controls, these are the norms. these are the norms. And nothing that I would say I want to challenge or have a discussion on. As Mr. Gross has done this and he's got a lot of experience, I actually sat on the ASTM board that developed groundwater modeling standards for 12 years. So this is what I do for a living. This is what I've done. This is, this is my, this is my, this is actually my passion. I don't want to, I don't want to get into your business of calling it correct or incorrect because I think what you've done systematically is valid. I've got a few questions. And those questions pertain to the site. Now, in your work, you show that the groundwater flow is moving towards the lake. So effectively, you've used the groundwater pumping test, aquifer testing that was done. You've come up with, with your models and, and, and that has been done. I have a question. Was there any information on this side that you guys utilized to come up with these potentiometric surfaces?
We, well, we put in two additional wells on the water plant side.
Okay.
Because we, like I talked about, this is a long, narrow site.
So that would be this and this?
Correct.
Okay.
We put those two wells in just to kind of widen the net and get a better idea of where we had groundwater flow, particularly going off towards the lake. Because that was my main concern was groundwater to surface water. The, the groundwater to potable use is not a concern. Those contours down to the south of the property is not as important as those to the north.
Now, was there any information with respect to either soil or groundwater monitoring wells on this site at all?
I did not use it.
Okay. But was there, was there availability to that information? Was that information available?
There were none.
Now, that said and done, because I want that clarity of the risk assessment that I've been asking for and where we are, they're apples and oranges.
But you do, you do, we're all in agreement that that's not what this study.
Oh, I agree. This is the reason that I pulled that up because I've asked the same question over and over and over again since November of last year. Did you do a risk assessment? Oh, a risk assessment is being done. A risk assessment for that work was never done and it can't be done. It was connected without a risk assessment. So no matter what you say, no matter what is, what, what, what was done was not scientifically correct or risk mitigationally correct. What is done here, I have no qualms, no issues. Now, when we discuss the issue of land use, it's industrial. And the groundwater issue in itself, it's, it's a non, it's a non-issue as long as you don't do deep excavation and de-watering, active de-watering. Is that it?
No, that's not true.
Okay. So what is the?
So what we probably do, because we do have some exceedances in the center of the site.
Okay.
Cobalt, barium, or not barium, beryllium, just barely, just a little bit of nickel. Those are the three compounds. What we do is put a groundwater use restriction on that property. And all that means is you can't put a drinking water well in. You can do construction, you can do, you know, and the water's deeper. So it's likely that you're not going to be encountering the groundwater anyway because it's at depth and you're not going to be doing construction that deep. But if we had to, let's say it's at five feet or, and it has exceedances, then we put groundwater use restriction and a risk mitigation plan on that that basically tells construction worker, and they have to be notified, okay, this has the potential to have this chemical of concern in it and here's what you do. And it's, it's kind of a soils, groundwater management. But I do want to add something to your discussion is that it's important to look at the data collected from this site when it comes to concerns of anything that may have prior, or previously gone off the site. Because there's only been a couple areas that were actually remediated on this site and removed off-site for disposal. The rest of it has been reused. A lot of the coal fines taken out of the two ponds and out of the main retention pond were then used at the base of the berm within the multi-use trail. And that material was characterized. And if you look at the data, that 190-some soil samples, that is representative of what you have out there in the soil as it stands now, as it was prior, except for the coal. I mean, the coal's gone. They, that was taken off and sold. So, you know, there's no real, there's no mercury, there's, there's, there's limited metals that were encountered. There's VOCs, there's limited semi-volatiles. I mean, that's representative of what was there prior when the site was in operation below the coal layers. I think that's critical when you look at potential sources in the past as it relates to maybe a risk assessment or whatever. That's what I would look at anyway. If I was, if I was tasked to go back and look at this, which I'm not asking to be tasked to do this, that's where you start because you're looking at your source materials. And now we have a really good fingerprint of what those are.
If I may ask, if you were to, in your professional opinion, to do an assessment for the connection of any surface water runoff into the lake, would you have done a risk assessment to understand what was out there before your connection?
That's a very broad question because a risk assessment can mean a lot of different things. Certainly if I was to look at it now, I probably wouldn't look at it because it's, it's, it's water under the bridge, so to speak. I think when they did a root cause analysis on the work before, which they did do, you know, the previous, the owner of L E R, hell?
Hey, L E R G.
Yes, thank you. You'd think I would have it by now. They actually did look at source areas out there. I mean, to my knowledge anyway. And I don't want to get into that because that's really not why I'm here for, but you know, you'd do the same thing. That's all.
So I have a question for Mr. Shamir, if I may. And if you could just stay here because you could add to it if you don't mind.
Sure.
So, Mr. Shamir, the city of Avon Lake has a stormwater ordinance within our own code. And no permit was ever applied for. If a permit were to be applied for, the procedures that would have to go through to grant that permit would more than likely, and between the two of you can probably clear this up for me, test the water in the pond, test the water outside of the pond. Because for years, the city did test water from that large Avon Lake pipe that goes through Miller Road. And we tested over on the south side of Lake Road, in Miller Road, is an area you can go down and can test it. And if we needed to do something, we could do something to fix it. If it was okay, then it would be okay. But at least there would be a permit and the topic would be closed. Is this a process that you would like to see go forward?
Of course.
So is this a process that you believe would then put an end to all these discussions back and forth? Because we do have a permit here that never was applied for. If a permit were to be applied for, we can then put this to rest.
If I understand what you're saying.
City of Avon Lake has a stormwater permit process that was not applied for. And we do have a procedure or process that isn't that complicated that if there's a problem that needs to be fixed, if there isn't a problem, then fine, there's a green light to go forward. On either end, if there's a problem that needs to be fixed, it gets fixed, and there's a green light to go forward, they get a permit. If it's okay at this, without having to do any more, then they get a permit and there's a green light. Right now, there is no permit from the city of Avon Lake for stormwater. And that is something that's within our code. We were going through a change within our administration and Public Works Director. We now have Mr., Liskovak, who is the Stormwater Director for the city of Avon Lake. And so there is a process that we could go through if Avon Lake Regional Water were to apply for that permit. Yes, sir. Come on in. Thank you.
I, I would just add to that is now that we are the owner of the property, if this is the process, then that's the process and.
Let's do it and get it over with.
Yeah, I mean, if that's, if that's what needs to be done, we certainly have, of course, we did have a dry summer. And it was good for water sales, but the discharge from that retention pond was, was nonexistent. We, we did have some data collected in April during our due diligence period. This fall in.
Beginning of October.
Beginning of October. When we did have a substantial amount of rain, we were able to get some more data.
I may add, that's the first time between April and October that we had any flow within the outfall.
And, and we had a sampler in there the entire time. So, and that's checked regularly, just like on any of our other samplers.
So it could be reported then?
Absolutely. The, the big thing is we want to make sure we're, we're collecting data. So if that's the process, that's the process and we'll do what we need to do.
And if you could get together with Mr. Liskovak and there's a procedure and we can just put this to bed, thank you, gentlemen.
And we do have data, I mean, and that's part of our next phase is to get at least one or two more samples if we can.
Thank you.
From, from a, from a VAT perspective, what I'm talking about.
Now, when the, when the pond was dry?
Well, it wasn't dry, but it wasn't overflowed.
Well, but at the end of it, what I noticed is it had been cleaned out.
Oh, yes.
So was any of that sediment sampled or analyzed?
Well, yeah. When we did our Phase 2, it's part of the finds that are made within the base of that all-purpose trail. I'll call it that. I don't know what it's going to be, but all-purpose trail, you know. So it was used as base. They put it in three different piles when they cleaned out all three ponds, characterized it, and they dug down, or they cleaned out the rock. And I did inspect that when I was out there.
So the pond before the handover to Avon Lake Regional Water was cleared of all residue?
Yes.
And that was sampled and is included? The sampling and analysis included in this report?
It is.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, but my understanding is that was the sediment in the pond, also the walls. There was various sample points and those are depicted in the report.
There are some composite and there's some discrete, so there's both samples. And we collected some along there. Depending on what we do next, later, in the next couple of weeks, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from our colleagues here? I ask any questions at this point? Anything else? Mr. Gentry on this?
No, thank you very much.
We, we did have, we do have Matt Connect from H C W here. And Matt did perform a independent third-party peer review of the work that's done. But I think we've, for the most part, I think the questions you had were answered, but I want to thank
Yes, thank you for coming as well.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Zubor has a question. Mr. Zubor, please.
I think that, Mr. Shamir, when is the, your meeting that you're having that you want H C W there at? What is the date of that?
I don't know. That is being arranged by.
January. That's a different division though of each.
Okay, well, he's, he's here from H C W. Maybe he can carry it off to the next division and let them know that we want them there on that specific date and time so that they have a heads up. I'm just trying to grease the wheels a little bit more so that, so if we could get him the date and time so we can get it to his colleague?
I've already taken care of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Sir, what he's referring to is an area that we have been under contract with you for many, many years.
Yes.
Thank you.
Landfill.
Thank you.
I'm just the dumb president, though, so I don't know.
I'm glad you're here. Anybody else up here? At this point, I would like to open it up for public comment. So everybody in the public that would like to speak to on this particular topic only? Seeing one, seeing two. Yes, okay. Just need to say your name and the city you're from.
Gerald W. F. Phillips, 461 Windward Way. I'm not sure this is on this particular property, but there are five tanks on there with pumps. I don't know if that was on the property A O E R G purchased or not. Also, on the east side of the plant, there's cement and where the tracks were, it looks like the coal was coming in on the east side very early before they did the addition on the west side. So I don't know if that's been looked at or not. So I'm glad finally we're going to deal with the illegal connection and getting some tests as far as the quality of the water. That's done on all the time, whenever there's a connection. And I'm just kind of shocked why it wasn't done. You can't put in a subdivision without the engineer doing a analysis of the retention pond to make sure it handles the honey year flood as far as the design. And they also have to approve the quality of the water before that subdivision gets approved. So during this period, all these subdivisions came before the city. Somehow they got approved, but somehow this got overlooked. I'm glad it's being corrected finally.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Anybody else? Seeing none, then we're going to close the work session. We're going to move on now to the community, to the collective committee meeting. We're going to need to go into an executive session. We will be returning back here. It'll be a short executive session. Those individuals that are in the audience that won't be part of the executive session, if you could go downstairs to the first area. Is, is it unlocked, Mr. Maron? Is the reception area unlocked? Okay, the reception area will be unlocked. And we'll have somebody come down and we'll, we'll bring you back up. Okay? Mr. Mr. Koss? We have a need for an executive session.
Thank you. I move that in compliance with the Ohio improvised code section 121.22. G2 Council will adjourn to executive session to discuss the purchase and sale of real property.
This executive session will include all elected officials along with Avon Lake Regional Water's executive and their attorney, along with their board member. No? Okay. And Mr. Liskovak? And the law director? And the mayor, his elected officials.
I will stick around.
Okay. And our board member, Mr. Ricky. Thank you. Mrs. Ross Maron, the role, please.
If I can, it's concerning the purchase of property. The properties are the Paolo, P A O L O, and Bruegger property.
Thank you.
Yeah, the second one, we couldn't hear you.
Bruegger, B R U E G G E R. I'm sorry. Bruegger and Paolo. It's P A O L O. Is that correct?
P A O L O.
Yes.
C O N S T.
C O N S T.
L L C.
Thank you. Thank you. Mrs. Ross Maron, the role?
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosch?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Koss?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zubor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the executive session is now ending. We need a roll call. Mrs. Ross Maron, she reconvened into the open session.
Mr. Arnold?
Here.
Mrs. Fenderbosch?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. Okay, we're back. So the next topic is going to be building and utilities committee. And Ms. Gentry, you have an item?
Yes, we have an amendment to the agreement for the reimbursement of the inspection costs with Ford Motor Company and their assembly plant. So this agreement was to get some additional reimbursement for the inspection costs that we've incurred. And, Mr. Mayor, do you want to?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Gentry. So we've had two prior MOUs with the Village of Sheffield and Sheffield Lake. We had an amendment to that first original one, and all these do is provide, Avon Lake Building Department does the inspections for Ford. That was an agreement reached ways back. As part of that agreement, there was a dollar amount attached to it, and we are coming to the point where that dollar amount will be all used up, but Avon Lake is still conducting the building inspections for the Ford Motor Plant. Sheffield Village does not have the personnel to do it. So to compensate the city of Avon Lake for doing the building inspections, we are looking at an additional MOU, which would provide basically $1,000 per month to the city of Avon Lake during the time in which the Ford plant will conclude, I believe it's the end of April, with all the inspections. There will be a, maybe a modification to this, but what you see have in front of you in your packet is pretty much the MOU that we're looking at. And this is for equipment that will be required for the TV programs that are put together by the city.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Shamir, for my colleagues? Mr. Zuber?
Are we going to pass this on emergency?
Yes, it's going to be on an emergency basis, so it's going to be the first reading.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So it'll be coming out of the 2024 budget then?
Correct.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, moving along. Anything else, Mr. Shamir?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zuber, the Finance Committee.
What we have is which is the purchase of property by the City of Avon Lake Municipal Utilities Board. It's at the corner of Avalon Drive and Lake Road. And I'm going to turn this over to the Law Director for his comments. And I think that we may have some comments from the municipal utilities also.
Well, Ms. Utilities here is present. There's actually maybe two parcels that we're looking to have suspension of rules next at the council meeting next week. It's the property owned by P A O L O C O N S T LLC. And also Bruegger Property, B R U E G G E R. So there's actually maybe two parcels we're waiting for right now to see if the second parcel will be ready to go for Monday. And Mr. Monroe from Regional Water is here if there's any questions.
Mr. Monroe, do you want to say something?
Thank you, Council President. We did discuss this. This is consistent with other parcels that we have acquired adjacent to our water filtration plant. This is for our future expansion.
Thank you. Any further discussion from my colleagues? Seeing none, Mr. Zuber, you have another item.
Yeah, the second item is the Assistant Finance Director. There was a job description that was moved out of the Human Resource Committee to update that. I did receive a email from the mayor, which I forwarded on the council. And also to have Valerie, if she could print it out and have it for our Finance Committee meeting tomorrow. The salary range would be between seventy-two thousand, a hundred and one thousand for the Assistant Director. The mayor's requesting a new salary of eighty-five thousand dollars. Her current salary is seventy-seven thousand dollars. He's also requesting a stipend of a thousand dollars for the work that she's been doing. Since the Finance Director has been gone since August, I have no problem with any of those numbers as put forth by the mayor. And like I said, we'll look at to move this out of committee tomorrow and pass on first reading on Monday.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Zuber? Thank you. Mr. Zuber, anything else?
Just that we have two Finance Committee meetings in the next two days, five o'clock tomorrow. It's more of a Budget Committee meeting here in council chambers. And then at five-thirty or immediately after the Public Service Committee meeting on Wednesday. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we're going to move on to Public Safety and Health Committee, Mr. Cos.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I'll preface this by saying that all three of these items that I'm going to talk about came out of the last Public Safety and Health Committee meeting with a three to zero vote from the committee. The first item I have is the fireworks contract. And I misspoke last week when I said that there would be no further action needed from council on this, citing just the vote from the committee. Upon review, the Law Director recommends that we pass this by legislation. So just to go over some of the facts again, this is going to be the fireworks contract for the annual Fourth of July fireworks show, which the dates that we have this year will be July the third, twenty twenty-five, and a rain date on July seventh, twenty twenty-five. The contract would be with American Fireworks. They've been in operation since nineteen oh two. There is almost literally a blow-by-blow or boom-by-boom description of how their show would work in our packet. I'm going to ask that this be passed on the second reading, which would be the sixteenth suspension of the rules and emergency. And if there's anything additional, I would direct the questions to the mayor as he was involved in the negotiation of this.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Cos on this topic? Mr. Cos, go on.
Thank you. The second item that I have is the body worn camera grant for the Avon Lake Police Department. This is to authorize the Avon Lake Police Department to apply for a ten thousand dollar grant. There are no matching funds required. And I'll read the justification from Vince Molnar, the police chief. This grant would upgrade the entire body camera system to the newest cameras that Motorola is selling. We have old, we currently have old watch guard cameras, newer V three hundred models. And in twenty twenty-five, we will be purchasing their newer models. And this would stay consistent with keeping all of their cameras as the same model and not different models. Again, this does not require any action from city council. This is just authorizing the police department to apply for the grant. And the grant is coming from the State of Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services. And again, this passed out of committee three zero. This is an informational item for council.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Cos on this topic? Thank you. Mr. Cos, you have another item.
Yeah, thank you. The third item that I have, pull it up, is the much-talked-about vehicle exhaust system program. At the last Public Safety and Health Committee meeting, the committee voted three to zero to accept the bid of MagnaGrip for the vehicle exhaust removal system installation project. We have the contract and all the documentation in our paperwork or in our packet. And the total cost is ninety-nine thousand seven hundred and forty-eight dollars. Again, I'm going to ask that this be passed on the second reading, suspension of the rules, so that it would be passed on the sixteenth of this month.
Thank you. Any questions on this particular topic for my colleagues? Okay, that's, now I'll take us into the third reading of legislation. The first one is ordinance number twenty-four dash one five six. This has to do with the position of Assistant Public Works Directors. Any questions, any comments? Okay, I see. The next one is ordinance number twenty-four dash one five seven R. This is the position of Public Works Supervisor. It's the job description. Any comments? My colleagues? Okay, we're going to move along to ordinance number twenty-four dash one six six. This is the fixing of the salary of the mayor. Any comments? Yes, Mr. Zuber?
Yeah, just if we fail to pass this piece of legislation on Monday, then the mayor's salary will go up to one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, which is a fifty percent increase. This piece of legislation sets the mayor's salary at a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Thank you for putting that out. Any further discussion, Mr. Cos?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I'm going to say it on this one. I'm also going to say it on the next ordinance discussion that's going to come up. Next Monday, I will not be here. I will be out of the state. So I will be unable to vote on both twenty-four one sixty-six and twenty-four one sixty-seven. But I'd like to say on this issue with the mayor's salary that had I been here, I would be voting yes on this for the reasons that Mr. Zuber talks about. And more, and also more specifically, anytime you look at adjusting public officials' salaries, it has to be done out in the open, as transparent as can be, and also with preferably citizen members making recommendations and conducting the studies and making a recommendation to the elected body for acceptance. And I think that the way that the HR Committee, which was then under Mr. Zuber, handled this by the committee and then council, appointing three members of the community to come together to study not only this issue, but the next issue and make recommendations to council with the proper way to do it. So I would be, I will be voting, I would be voting yes on this if I was here, and I urge my colleagues to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on fixing the salary of the mayor? Okay, we're going to move on to the next one. This is ordinance number twenty-four dash one six seven. This is fixing the salary of the members of council. Any comments from my colleagues? Mr. Zuber?
Yeah, this also came out of the Citizens Committee raising council salaries by two thousand dollars a year from twelve thousand to fourteen thousand. And as has been done for as long as I can remember, an additional two thousand dollars for the council president. This would be, go into effect on January first of twenty twenty-six.
That's correct. Any further discussion, Mr. Cos?
Yeah, thank you. Again, I support the work that was done by the Citizen Committee that made the recommendation on this. And I'll reiterate what I said on the previous one. Anytime you're talking about public officials and an increase in salary, it's always a very sensitive subject. And there never seems to be a good time to look at it. And I can hear Mayor Zoka in my head saying, well, there's never a good time because there's always going to be something you can point to saying it's not a good time to discuss any type of increase for any type of public official. But I thank the HR Director, Mr. Zuber at the time, for including this with the mayor's one, to have it looked at as well, too. I believe it's been, how many years it's been since it's been looked at? And because it's not going into effect until twenty twenty-six, you know, it's not going to happen this upcoming budget year or have any impact on this year. I think it's also important to note that we're going to have some elections coming up. We're going to have probably some more people running for city council. And I think there's always a push to try to, in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, to encourage more people to run for office. And two thousand dollars extra per year probably isn't incentive enough. But it doesn't hurt when you have people in the community that recognize that they want to be a part of city council, or they want to be a part of the community. And just the amount of work and time and effort that goes into some of these positions, you have to make it worth, you have to make it worth it to put that time and effort in with all the other things that people juggle in their personal lives. And I think that the recommendation that was made by the citizen body in, in all of their studies that they did, they contacted other municipalities. They worked with the Law Director. They did a lot of research on this. This wasn't a number they just plucked out of the air, both this one and the aforementioned mayor's one. They put a lot of time and effort into this. And that citizen body made a recommendation based on what other communities have as well, too. So I think what you have is a fair and responsible and modest increase. And it might be another seven, eight, nine, ten years until the next increase is proposed. So I want to thank those members for doing that. So again, with people that are looking to serve, that looking to run for the first time, this is going to affect people that are out there in the community, more so that it's going to affect some of us up here. Because who knows how much longer some of us are going to serve up here. But this is something that's going to be in effect for the next three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten years. And I think that the increase that is proposed is modest. And I think it's in line with what the other communities have as well, too. This job does take a lot of time. It does take a lot of effort. And it can be difficult at times. So I think that paying a fair wage to those people that come out to serve is the right way to go, just as we would pay a fair wage for our rank-and-file city workers as well, too. So had I been here next week, I would have voted yes on this as well, too.
Thank you, Mr. Cos. Anybody else want to have a comment on this particular topic? I can tell you this, that none of us are up here for the money. You have to really have passion to wanting to help your community, improve your community, and find joy in the work that you're doing in assisting people. Sometimes we don't come to the solutions that some people want us to come to. But everyone up here, and I can truthfully say that for those that have worked with me a long time and those that are rather new, they put their entire heart and their entire ability into doing what they're doing. And we all come from different backgrounds. As you saw from the discussions even with the work session that we had earlier, we all have different backgrounds with different skills and talents that we bring to our city. And I, I really commend Mr. Zuber for bringing in an ad hoc committee of our peers, your neighbors, my residents, my neighbors, to come up with what they thought would be a fair salary for members of council, because it's an awkward position to be in, to be voting on your own salary. Seeing no further comments, I'm going to move on to the second readings. Ordnance number twenty-four dash one seven one, to designate a portion of State Route eighty-three as a business district. Any comments from my colleagues? Mr. Cos?
Just that, we'll be going a full three readings on this, so I'll be asking for a vote on the sixteenth.
Okay, three readings, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance number twenty-four dash one seven five. This is approving the plan of Operation Governance for the OPEC Opt-In Gas Aggregation Program. Any comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, we will move forward then to the next one. It's ordinance number twenty-four dash one seven six. This is the ordinance authorizing all actions necessary to establish an opt-in natural gas program. Any comments from my colleagues? We'll move on then to ordinance number twenty-four dash one seven seven, amending codified ordinance section two oh eight point oh one. This is the fee schedule. Any comments? My colleagues? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to ordinance number twenty-four dash one seven nine. This is in ordinance to make appropriations for the current expenditures and other expenditures of the City of Avon Lake for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Do we have any comments from my colleagues? Now at this time, okay, then at this point in time, we're going to open it to public input. And if you could come forward and tell us your name and the city that you are residing in. Thank you. Just the city you're residing in.
Avon Lake, the beautiful city of Avon Lake I reside, Gerald W. Phillips. The CIC has a Article seven, Conflict of Interest Policy. Section seven point one says purpose. The purpose of this conflict of interest policies is to protect the interests of the corporation when the corporation is contemplating entering into a transaction arrangement that might benefit directly or indirectly the private interests of a director, member of a committee, or board delegated powers, a committee member. And seven point two defines what an interested party is. Seven point three covers procedures, duty to disclose, procedures addressing, addressing the interests, violations. I find it a little disturbing that on the Brownfield Committee, we have Jeff Browse, who's affiliated with the Royal Bank of Canada. And it appears that he has at least an appearance of conflict of interest. We have Andrew Perry, who is a real estate attorney at McCarthy and Levitt, who represents developers, vertical, and that with financing. And yet he's on the Brownfield Committee. And we're dealing with a transaction about the power plant. Then we got Todd Davis, okay? Who represents a lot of companies in dealing with redevelopment. And I'm not quite sure, he hasn't represented Charard in other instances. What's disturbing is, it seems like Todd Davis has taken an interest in specifically answering questions of certain council members about investigating another council person, Rob Shamir. And I find that quite disturbing, both before he became a council person and after. So I really think that there's conflicts of interest. The CIC, as I indicated, I believe is a rogue organization. They have meetings, October fourth, two thousand twenty-four. Meeting. They have another meeting February nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, February twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four. And also one on October twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three. Now I like to know where this Sours, S O U R S, Buie, B U I E appraisal for the parkland is. I've been heard that there is no appraisal for a parkland, but I found out that there is an appraisal for a parkland. And I'm, and Mr. Zimmerman asked for it, and he was told there is no appraisal. So I'm going to make a specific public records request. We have no meeting minutes. Section seven point four, CIC says records of proceedings. Minutes of the board and all committees with power shall contain names of purpose, people who have financial interests, names of people who were present for discussion, votes, content of discussions. We don't have meeting minutes. We don't. They're required under the Sunshine Law, one twenty-one point two-two. I asked for public records. I haven't got them. I haven't got them. 172412 says you're a public body, you should have records. So verbally, I'm putting a demand on Mr. Ebert to bring a mandamus action to compel CIC and the Brownfield Committee to produce meeting minutes by Friday. If he doesn't bring the action, then I'm going to go ahead and sue both CIC and the Brownfield Commission. Now, we talked about the infamous Route 83, you know? If you look at what the city of Avon does, they did a US limit S2 speeding zoning report. They got a crash summary report that details all the crash, not just get, come up with one number and say there's 34. And interesting, the US limit S2 specifically states in its information, a comprehensive crash study should be undertaken to identify engineering and traffic control deficiencies and appropriate corrective actions. The speed limit should only be reduced as a last measure after all treatments have been either tried or ruled out. We just don't do that in the city of Avon Lake. If you did, you wouldn't be involved in lawsuits. So I hope you undertake those actions.
Thank you for coming forward. Anybody else?
I'll be right there. William Zimmerman, here in beautiful Avon Lake. As Mr. Phillips stated, Brownfield Committee doesn't give minutes. They don't tell us when their meetings are, doesn't, don't allow public to attend, have private phone calls. Documents that I've received recently indicates that there's a private phone call between Ted Esporn and Ted Davis about Mr. Shamir. And in that same time slot where he's trying to justify his $700 an hour, says that he was also preparing for a Brownfield Committee meeting. This is 9/28/22, years ago, when Mr. Zolko was still in charge, because he's got his name on this as a sign off. So you guys have been doing this with the Brownfield Committee for years, not months, days, minutes, years. This is why I asked for Zach Arnold's resignation, because he's on that, helping run that from the CIC position. He's the representative of this council. He's not representing me, I guarantee you that. So do we think that all citizens should be treated the same? I believe that's the case. No one should be different. And I surely believe there shouldn't be any biases or prejudice, because you'd be getting sued. And as Mr. Phillips says, you're very short term away from that. So my next question is, as a citizen, Mr. Shamir is being targeted by Ted Esporn and Mr. Arnold, because on 7/11/23, Mr. Arnold makes a call again about Mr. Shamir and his issues in regards to the power plant, to Mr. Davis. So why would he be doing that about another citizen? But it gets better, because on 1/18/24, when he's been elected as a member of this body, again, he, Ted Esporn, makes calls to Todd Davis in regards to these matters. Why would that have to be done? They don't like the fact that he's rocking the boat? Let me guess, he wasn't the right fit? Because he stood up and he's trying to make an example for the citizens of the city. You guys didn't like the fact that he rocked the boat. Jeff Smith's the right fit. That's why he's on the committee and took the position that Marty relinquished. I don't understand this. He's being singled out by his colleagues and the gentleman who's supposedly the economic developer in our city. That's a joke! I have documents that will tell you things that'll make your head spin, because when I read them, I want to puke at the way that you do your job. You work for the citizens of the city, and you make me sick. I'm at a different meeting. Mr. Zuber attends. He tries to tell us that the value of the ALERG portion of the 41.41 is worth $9 million. And 1 million of it is for the building. So it's eight plus the one for nine. Yet I go to the assessor's office, and I speak to people there, and I get documentation that tells me now it's worth $1.5 million. And zero for the building. Zero, because it's half demolished. It's beat up, it's beaten down. Wonder why that is? All of a sudden, we have two dramatic differences? Doesn't make sense. Somebody's not telling the truth. Unfortunately, I believe it's the assessor's office who is telling the truth at 1.5. So there are finance and budget meetings in the next day or two, as Mr. Zuber said, at 5 o'clock tomorrow. I encourage, I beg my fellow citizens to come here and listen to how they spend the money.
Thank you, sir, for coming forward. Anybody else? Okay, we're at the point in time where there are announcements. Any announcements from my colleagues? Yes, there, Mr. Shamir.
Madam President, there were, just currently, I mean, I'd like to know where this allegation is coming from, and I need to know, I mean, I, this, this documentation that they're reading from, exactly what and how investigation of me by other members of the council? I mean, what are we, what are we talking about? Is this documentation? I'd like to see that documentation.
Just, just a moment, please. Just a moment, Mr. Shamir. Just a moment, Mr. Zuber. So, Mr. Mayor and Law Director, do you have an idea of what the resident was referring to?
He made an allegation. I have no idea about his allegation. Any records that were supplied to them, we could certainly give to Mr. Shamir.
Mr. Zuber, you had your hand up.
Well, I was just going to comment on this. Evidently, the records were what was paid out to Mr. Davis, his, his billing. And so whenever he's on a phone call with a member of council, with a member of the administration, he writes down what it's for. And so if somebody called and talked to Mr. Davis, Mr. Davis wrote down what it was called, what it was about. And some, you know, I've called Mr. Davis with concerns about you. I'll admit that. And based on some of the things that you've presented here. And I think that that's what it is, it's just that, that's how Mr. Davis writes down what transpired in the phone call and why he's billing the city based on the phone call that he received from, from the mayor, Todd Davis, myself, Mr. Arnold, I, that, that's just, it's on the billing. I mean, like any other lawyer would bill. I mean, so I think it, I think they are making an inference that, that they are calling out you as a council person and that we are going after you. It is, that's just the billing process, and I'm sure that the mayor and the law director can give you the same bills. It says, it just says phone call from whoever to talk about some issues that you had brought up. I don't think it's singling you out. I don't think it's saying specifically that you're a problem or we're, quote, targeting you, because I think that is totally false. And I think for you to think anything different of that, it would be incorrect.
Mr. Shamir.
Well, I have looked pretty much everything that has been submitted through the requests that Mr. Phillips, I mean, there is, I mean, God, there is, there's plenty of them. And I can tell you that I, I spend a lot of time reading what has been requested. And I have not seen anything. The only billing that I've seen is, is a couple of pages that it's ours and nothing pertains to the actual content. So I would like to see whatever that it is that you've got or get, get the same information. Thank you.
I think that it's reasonable for Mr. Shamir to make the request that if an allegation is being made and that his name is part of it, that he receive what you receive, because people can interpret things differently, as Mr. Zuber has, has stated.
May I return to the podium?
No, not at this moment. Not, not at this moment. He is my law director, and I will go with my law director. Yes, Mr. Arnold.
Yeah, I don't know what Mr. Zimmerman's talking about tonight. You know, there, like Mr. Zuber said, there's calls made. Mr. Shamir had brought up some concerns about the power plant over the years, and I have talked to our attorney about the concerns that Mr. Shamir had, and that was it, period.
Right. So these are, these are concern based, these are not individual based, correct?
No, it's not individual based. I have the utmost respect for Mr. Shamir. We've had multiple conversations and disagreements and...
Mr. Mayor, yes?
Yes, thank you. As indicated, these are probably what he's referring to, are billing records. They're very basic. I will guarantee if you go through those records, you're going to see calls from Mr. Davis to Mr. Shamir, vice versa, as well, or meetings, and they'll be billed accordingly. So I think there's just an inference or an allegation being made here that has no factual basis.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, miscellaneous business and announcements by any of my colleagues? Yes, Mr. Cause?
Yeah, just wanted to say, final call for the 2024 Lorraine County Toys for Tots campaign. The pickup date will be Monday, December the 7th, and we have locations here in the city to drop off your new unwrapped, unopened toys, Lorraine at the Avon Lake Public Library, at the Avon Lake Fire Department, which is in after hours as well, too, if needed, and Avon Lake City Hall. A reminder that every toy and every donation that is donated as a part of this here in Avon Lake, those funds and those toys stay in Lorraine County. So any questions, the public can reach out to me directly. Thank you.
Thank you. And many, many newspaper articles have been written about the good work that, that that cause brings to families and the joy it brings to children. I have three announcements, if nobody else has any announcements. I have three announcements. Just want to reiterate that budget is at 5:00 PM in these chambers, and we are going to be time constrained because the planning commission will be following us in, and that is part of the Finance Committee meeting. The next thing is, is that the mayor and Mr. Ebert and I are working on revisions to Chapter 220. You will shortly be receiving our proposed changes. I would like to have your feedback if we could get these changes put through the, through this year to try to help with the efficiencies that would help with, with moving the business of the city of Avon Lake along. That would be greatly appreciated. And the last part that I want to talk about is greening Avon Lake. It's the holiday season, and Wednesday, you can purchase a wreath, beautiful wreath, made out of fresh greenery, along with table toppers at the lake house from 3:00 until 7:00 PM. And the proceeds will be going toward Friends of the Park, who are designating it towards Alps. Any further discussions up here? So I want to thank all of you for, for coming here, colleagues. You do, you do great work. I know you put a lot of time and effort and soul into what you're doing, and I just wanted to thank you. It's that time of year which we need to appreciate each other. We are now adjourned. Thank you.